As you read it.
Okay.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. East Hemphill Township public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure outlined online. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on a non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed towards the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item. I would ask that you would please join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Now, the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, our first item for business tonight is a public hearing. This will be a hearing under the Pennsylvania liquor code to hear the applicant of Third Eye Incorporated doing business as Taj Mahal requesting the proposed intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license to property located at 2080 Bennett Avenue. I'd like to confirm for the record that the hearing was advertised on April 2nd and April 9th. The property was posted on Tuesday, April 8th. Anyone that wishes to make a statement for or against the applicant must be sworn or affirmed prior to making their statement, and must state their name and address. And with that, we will open the hearing.
So, good evening, supervisors. My name's Aaron Zeimer. I'm an attorney with RKG Law, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Third Eye Inc. and the applicant for this intermunicipal license transfer. I know the board actually just recently, a couple of months ago, had the benefit of another one of these hearings, so I'll spare you some of the details that I'll sometimes share with supervisors who don't get to do this that often. But just by way of some brief introduction, as was pointed out in the introduction, we're seeking the transfer of a license from, actually, the city of Lancaster to East Hemphill. There are 15 other licenses currently located in East Hemphill Township. However, none of those, to our knowledge, were actively listed for sale. There was one that was pending transfer that is likely the one that the board heard a couple of months ago. There is one license in safekeeping that's held by 7-Eleven, so despite it not being actively used, it was not available for sale, and my guess is will likely be put to active use in the near future. I mention that because I do like to share with municipalities where these applications are presented, a little bit of background as to why these hearings are needed, not only because the liquor code requires it, but there was a time when licenses were a bit more readily available, particularly within a municipality. The reality now is that most licenses, when they are transferred from one owner to another, have to move from one municipality to another. And it's mostly the happenstance or the result of the fact that there are places now like 7-Eleven, Sheetz, Wise, Giant, Wegmans, and the list goes on, who are acquiring and are now in the license business where they're selling alcohol, and they use the same license that we're here seeking to transfer tonight that would go to any regular, traditional restaurant where it's really based on or about the food service and not convenience sales or grocery items. So when that changed a handful of years ago, and those types of businesses were allowed to use the same license, it really shrank the market of licenses that are available for restaurateurs like Manny, who I'll introduce in a minute. So what the genesis of that has been that the licenses that are available almost always have to move from one municipality to another because there are fewer licenses. It's also why they're much more expensive than they were a decade or so ago. So I just wanted to give the board a little bit of an understanding of that, and explain why these hearings are likely to be more and more common as licenses move from one location to another. So with that being said, I want to introduce Manny, if you would please give.
Yeah, my name is Mani Ram Sharma Podial.
Go ahead.
My name is Mani Ram Sharma Podial. I have a restaurant called Taj Mahal.
I'm just gonna have you speak into the microphone.
And this is 2080 Bennett Avenue. This restaurant I've been running since last 29 years, since 1996. We, right now, I am in the process of expansion of my restaurant. My next door neighbor space was available, and with the permit I recently received from the township, where I'm doing my construction work over there, and because of the demand of my customers, I am seeking this opportunity to buy the license, and I request you to kindly permit this and give me the opportunity to serve my customers visiting to my place.
Manny, I wanted to ask or point out for the board's benefit, and they may already be aware, I'm correct that you held a liquor license in the past at this location, is that right?
That's correct.
About how long ago was that, that you recall?
I, I, I'm not exactly remember the year. I was not prepared for that. I, my, I started in 96, and I think 98, 99, I think I got the license from the liquor board directly.
And you held it for maybe approximately 10 or 15 years?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And because I didn't have a very proper bar per se, but since the, the business-wise, it was not viable for me to hold on the liquor license. At that time, the price and was offered was very good, and at that particular moment, I had, I was in need of the fund because I were not doing very well at that particular period of time, just before the COVID.
Yeah.
So I had to sell the license to, you know, to move on.
Manny, when you held that license, and I think this is a little bit unique for your application, that you previously held a license at this location, during the time that you had that license, did you ever have a citation from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board or the state police?
No, not even one.
During the 29 years that you've been operating there, do you recall ever having any issues with the police or problems with neighbors?
Never, ever.
Okay.
Except the false alarm at night, couple of times.
The, the security alarm? Yeah, yeah. Manny, can you just briefly describe the expansion that you mentioned a moment ago, and the reason why you felt like now was a good time to add the license to the business? How many seats are you adding approximately?
I'm adding about the second eating area is about 30, 30 seats, 25 to 30 seats, and I have a banquet hall next, next to it, which is about 100 seats.
And you'll be able, for the banquet hall, able to have events and other
Yes.
larger group settings there?
That's correct.
Are you, with this renovation, are you planning any kind of like bar designated area?
No.
So, am I correct, it'll still be a restaurant first and foremost?
It should be those, yes.
Yeah, okay, understood. All right. Manny, are you familiar with what I'll call the ramp, the Responsible Alcohol Management Training Program that the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board offers?
Yes, I am.
When you held the license previously, were you certified?
Yes, I was certified.
Is it your intention, when you acquire this license, that you would, you would be certified and have your staff certified as well?
Absolutely.
Yep. And just generally speaking, your intention to comply with the liquor code and the requirements?
Absolutely.
Yep, okay. That's all I have for the board at this point. If the board has any questions, we're happy to answer them. I can summarize a little bit why I think this makes sense if, if there's no other questions.
Yeah, this is just a general educational question for me. So I see you're acquiring it from the Alley Cat in Lancaster. When they put it up for sale, like, what's the process for purchasing it? Is it like an auction, or just advertising newspaper?
Yeah, so in this particular case, that license was put into safekeeping when that place closed. And then, yeah, it's much like a private sale. Sometimes, real estate brokers or other brokers that are specific to this industry will list the license for sale, and there'll be a listing, and buyers will, you know, reach out the same way. It's almost like a real estate transaction. The PLCB does have an auction program, but that's pretty unique, and there aren't any Lancaster County licenses available through that auction system.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bennett.
Mr. Zeimer, I think you covered it pretty well in terms of background. You know, I appreciate you bringing up the fact that he's had a liquor license before. I think that, I think that is important. So he, he knows what to expect. And, you know, like, the only other thing I'd say is congratulations on being in business for 29 years. As a small businessman, that's a rarity. So again, congratulations, and look forward to a bright future at that location.
Brewbaker.
Mr. Bennett, for what it's worth, I'll, I actually intended to address that. Not only is it unique, I think, for any person to be in business for 29 years, but even more so in the restaurant space. There is just a certain amount of churn that exists in that industry for various reasons. So I do think it is commendable that they've been in business that long, and I think too, it speaks to the type of business they run. I think most of the people in this room, and hopefully most of the supervisors, have been a customer of the restaurant before. If you haven't, I'd encourage you to get there. I'm not here to market for them, but I think they do a fantastic job, and I think we're fortunate to have them in the township.
But I do see some familiar faces there.
Congratulations for that. Thank you.
No questions.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay. I won't belabor the point. I think, you can, Mr. Bennett, I think that the application here is obvious. Again, you pointed out, Mr. Bennett or Mr. Wigglesworth, that this is a bit unique. We, I've never had one of these before where somebody held a license, then sold it, and is now going back again, but I certainly wanted to highlight that. I think, you know, the standard here in the liquor code is that the transfer of the license wouldn't be adverse to the health, safety, welfare, or morals of the community. And I think, you know, this application uniquely situated because we've had the experience that that was the case. They didn't have issues. And again, this isn't the type of place where this is going to increase late-night activity or significant alcohol consumption. They're a restaurant first, second, third, and fourth, and the, the alcohol service will be complimentary to that, and will allow them to grow with their business and their expansion. We think it, it's a, it's a good thing for the township, a good thing for the restaurant, and we'd ask the supervisors for approval. The only other thing I have to add is I would just ask that our application that we submitted and the, the publication of the notice of the hearing be made a part of the record. And with that, I have nothing else for the board.
So we will make that part of the record. Is there anyone here from the audience that would like to comment or has questions? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. All right. Are there any final comments from the board?
None.
All right, then we're going to close the hearing, and it is 7:18. Okay, gentlemen, with that, this is, I guess, as stated, is becoming more of a routine item. I don't see anything unusual here, and I think we should move to take action on this tonight. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-15 authorizing the transfer of a liquor license into the township to be used at 2080 Bennett Avenue, Third Eye Incorporated, doing business as Taj Mahal Restaurant? There's a motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second from Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries four to zero. Congratulations and best wishes. Thank you. Up next, we have our consent agenda. This is typically, requires very little debate, approval of our minutes, treasures report, and so on. Are there any comments or questions from the board concerning the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. And if I understand correctly, since we have the minutes in here, Mr. Brewbaker, you will be abstaining. Is that correct?
Yes, I'd be abstaining from items D and E.
Okay. So, on the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item D invoices as presented?
So moved.
Okay. And also, let's do D and E together. I'm sorry, we'll just do D. Motion to approve consent agenda item D. Motion was made by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three to zero with one abstention. Okay. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item E, the minutes, as presented?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Okay. Action item, we have the Lancaster County Conservation District Memorandum of Understanding.
So this MOU is a standard practice that we have, I believe, each year or every two years. It's an agreement between the Lancaster County Conservation District and the township, which outlines roles and responsibilities for both entities. It's something we've done before, and it really hasn't changed. It's just an understanding of what they do for us and what we do for them.
Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from the board on this?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Zoom, okay. Hearing done. Is there a motion to authorize signature on the Lancaster County Conservation District Memorandum of Understanding as presented?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Under old business, again, we're just highlighting and mentioning the increase that we are facing in related to expenses over revenues, particularly in the air of fire and emergency services. And we've had this under old business for a while. We just want to highlight that to the public. There was, as mentioned in our last meeting, there was a pretty good article in our newsletter that went out that did a good job of summarizing this issue. Are there any additional comments in regards to this tonight?
I would just like, like to point out that in the chief fire official's report for tonight, he indicates that he had to cover, at least I believe it was he that had to cover several shifts for Rorstown, so that they could remain in service. So, and, and he, he does such a great job in just, you know, monitor, monitoring both fire companies that we have and seeing to it that we do get the coverage that we need. We are, however, very short on manpower at times of the day, and hopefully that's something that we can address in the coming weeks and months from a financial standpoint. A question for Mrs. Schweitzer. Since, I mean, we're, we're not beating around the bush here, we, we may require a tax increase to cover fire service and emergency services in the 26 budget. Is the board limited to how much of an increase we could increase taxes?
There's not a limit to how much you can increase at one time, but there is an overall limit as to the milage rate for township. And I want to say it's 10, but I have, I would have to check.
In any one point?
Right.
Okay, you could raise your, you could raise 10.
Up to 10.
Up to 10, up to 10 mils.
Right.
So 10 mils would be the outside of what we could. So as we, as we budget for next year, you know, and, and see what our financial needs are for fire services, I think we can maybe keep that in mind for future consideration. Thank you.
So I just want to, just kind of piggyback off of that a little. I don't want to create any misconception from the audience or from somebody that might look at the minutes later. We would not be considering like a 10 mil increase, right?
No, no, no.
I just, I want to be clear on that. We would be, if there's going to be an increase, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood, most likely, of a quarter, a half mil that we're looking at. And again, let's, we're going to take a wait-and-see approach. We've been, we've prepared ourselves very well over the years, and there could be, and I'm hopeful, that we don't need to raise taxes. But again, when we get into budget season, we're going to look at the numbers and take a very thoughtful approach in what we do here. I think we are all in agreement and of the understanding that we need to provide these services to our residents, and that they need to be done in a professional manner. So that's going to be our objective. And again, I think is, hopefully, our citizens can see, we're not taking this lightly. We are looking at it, and we will, again, take our time and make a very thoughtful decision when it comes to it. Okay. Any questions from the audience on this? Yes, ma'am, if you could come to the microphone and give us your name, and could you also sign if you have not done so?
While she's signing in, I don't know if it was ever stated, but for the people in the audience, we're at 1.01 mil now. All right, just, so when Mr. Wigglesworth says he may go, you know, a quarter, a half, that, just so you know, we're, we are starting at 1.01.
Again, I'm just searching for information.
Can you please state your name and address?
Marty Polikowski Homestead Village. I'm searching for information. Is there a place that I can go on the web or whatever that can explain the whole system and where the ambulances come from and who pays for all that? I would need more information to be able to understand the whole process. Living at Homestead Village, we have a lot of ambulances that come, and, you know, my, my mother used that service, so I'm really interested in finding a little bit more about how the whole system works, so that I can understand if there's a hike.
So the first step would be, did you read our newsletter?
Got it, yeah.
Okay, I'd take a look at that thoroughly. That would be step one. And then, if you have any questions, I think the next step would be reach out to our staff here. Mrs. Garber would be a point of contact for you going further. You're welcome. Are there any other questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Also, under old business, we have the Steiman Quarterly Report.
So the Steiman Foundation is the overlying agency that is doing the Blue Green Corridor Project, was, which is a stream restoration and a trail system along the Little Conestoga. What they do is provide us with a quarterly report to explain to us what they're doing, where they stand in terms of their funding levels. Of particular note, we should congratulate them. They have currently almost $10 million in grant funding. They have another $3 million from private and other sources for a total of $13 million. And they have pending applications into various agencies of about $14 million to complete the project. So they, funding-wise, they're doing very well. And they have done projects at Trillium Place, Trillium Place. They just did the Whitlins there, and they have also done the work at the, off of Marietta at, behind Barcrest Apartments. So they're starting the, the stream restoration. They have not done any trail work yet.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience on this? Zoom, no? Okay. Under new business, I would just like to report that an executive session was held this afternoon after traffic commission began at 6:15 and ended at 7:00 PM to discuss a legal matter concerning Colebrook Apartments. Okay. Moving on, traffic commission report. We held a traffic commission report. Wasn't much to report tonight, other than chief is making use of the software this year that we provided. It, it looks like that it's a very useful tool. She seems happy with it, and it's about the extent of our traffic report. Let me move on to public comment. Is there anyone here with public comment tonight? Yes, sir. If you could come and give your name, please, and then also sign our login here upfront for meeting minute purposes. Thank you, sir.
Yes, my name is, excuse me, Darryl Gurkey. I live at 1015 Devonshire Road, and my comments are regarding the garden plots on Nisley Road. I had seen the garden plots there this last summer, and I thought, I only live a quarter mile away. Boy, that would be so nice. So I knew that they were assigned sometime in the beginning of the year. In December, I came to the office, inquired about when it was, and explained that I go to Florida for three months during the winter. Can I still apply? They said, yes, give us a check. And when it comes time to draw additional slots, you would be in the running. And I was told that there are 50 slots, and that if you're a gardener one year, you get first rights of refusal for a plot the next year. Plus, I was told that each gardener could have two plots. And I'm thinking, oh, if everybody takes two plots, that's 25 people for a township of how many thousands that we have here? I can, I know right away, my chances are zero. And after the draw, I received an email telling me that I didn't win, and that my check would be returned. I think those are the correct details, as I recall. My question is, now that you're working on that property on Nisley Road, have you thought about enlarging the number of garden plots so that more people could have a garden?
I would say, right now, you I would say, right now, yes. So I think you bring up a valid concern and would be a useful, be a useful exercise there, because there's a large part of that park that's, it's still in the planning stage. And, you know, there was some of the park that we wanted to be passive activity. So it's, I think it's worth looking at and exploring.
The garden plots are off of Nistley Road, so they're at the former caretaker's house.
Right, but he's talking, you're talking about the plot off of Knoll Road, correct?
No.
No.
I misunderstood.
There's nothing on Knoll.
On Nistley Road.
Okay.
Your garden plots are on, if you're.
West of the Turkey Hill.
On Nistley Road.
Where the basin is.
At the property, your garden plots are on the right part of the flat surface that they're generating now.
Got you, okay.
On the left side of the hill, there's like four times as much room to put garden plots there if you think that would be a good location for them.
So I'm going to ask staff this, is that going to interfere with the basins and anything that's being done there?
It won't. We didn't expand them this year or the year prior to that because we were kind of hemmed in in terms of what was available and the slope of the land.
Okay.
Now that the basin is in and things have been graded, certainly, we can look at that and see if there's more available for next year.
Is there anything that could be done for this year?
Perry, I'll have to defer to you. I know that they just planted grass, I believe.
They're still working on that area and right below the current garden plots, they're still using that as an entrance and in and out. I don't know when they will be finished there, but I would say this year would be a no.
Okay. For next year, Perry, do you see any issue with it?
We would have to look at what the grades are there, too, because it does, right where the end of the garden plot is now, it does kind of drop off. They would be kind of gardening on a, you know, on a slant. So I don't know if that would work or not with water runoff. We would have to take a look at that, you know, once all the topsoil is distributed up there. So something we can look at. Again, it would, it would be up to, you know, I guess, staff to see whether, how much they want to expand this, or the board, I should say, as to where we could go.
Okay. Is this something we could task with Parks and Rec?
That's exactly, yeah. My recommendation would be that's something we'll put on our agenda. I think it's, I think it's a good idea. It appears that we have room there to maybe expand the garden. Unfortunately, as Perry says, probably won't be this year.
Understand.
But it's something that we'll work on and hopefully be able to do.
Okay.
I appreciate you listening to me, and I thank you for considering a request to expand the garden. I think there'll be plenty of gardeners that will be very anxious to have more space.
Yeah, great, I agree.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, a question about that, is water provided there? I've seen the plots, but, okay, so that's kind of the key why it can't be, you know, Knoll.
Well, actually, Knoll does, they left us a well. Off of the Knoll Road track, they dug a well and they used it for irrigation for the soft.
The hydrant there, which they had a meter on for the water authority.
They had their own well, though, there, too.
Not that I recall. They, there was a meter there on Church Street that they used to use the hydrant with, and that's what they used for the sprinkler system at that point.
Okay. But there is plenty of water around.
I thought I remembered a board, Mr. Hummer, coming and asking for permission to drill a well there.
I don't remember, but that doesn't mean anything.
But either it is or it isn't, wouldn't be hard to find out, so if, at least check on that.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comment tonight? Hearing none, Zoom? Okay. Managers' report?
I'm going to defer to Diane for the Centerville Road report out.
So the Centerville Road project is moving forward in a very timely fashion now that we have good weather and open roads. And a key to remember, simply, they are in the final wearing course paving from Running Pump to Centerville on Marietta this week, and then starting at Marietta, moving south on Centerville over the next three weeks. The road, the railroad work was completed in last time than was expected last month, so that was done, and now they'll be able to tie in the rest of the paving. They're working on concrete aprons and those types of things, but the progress is significant at this point. And in addition to that, they're working on Route 30 at the same time to get the shoulders widened and the ramps tied in. So we're looking at the end of the summer for it to be completed and have a grand opening, ribbon cutting, whatever that might look like for the project at that point, so.
So Loroys Town Road Bridge Project, we're still waiting for it to really start getting the growth in there so we can close out the project. That's essentially done already. The South Chickies 283 Commerce Hub project at Office Booking Nook is moving forward in terms of the South Chickies Road is closed. It's going to be closed until the 28th of April. This is a private developer project, it is not the township. Once they figure out the issues with PennDOT, they will then start working on the ramps and the interchange, which is going to install two traffic signals at the, along Spooky Nook and 283. The Route 72 and Lititz Road temporary signals are also moving forward as a project. There are no hiccups there that I'm aware of. That should be done with flashing lights or flashing light at that intersection, probably early September. Hurr Park Phase Two, the contractors is getting a little stalled with the weather these days, but they have about two weeks worth of work. You should be seat paving by the time we have our next speeding up on the parking lot to the west. I also had a discussion with the HYA, the Hemphill Youth Association. They would like to increase the infield at the baseball field at Ahur Park. I spoke to the Park and Rec Committee, they didn't see any concerns with that. So they'll come in and do their excavation, and we'll provide them with some diamond text to fill it in. That will allow them to use the baseball field for older play.
And that's the field on the right, not the one on the left?
There is not.
I'm looking at it.
There ain't going to be one.
There isn't one on the left, it's just right, yes.
Well, there's two.
Softball is towards the back.
And that's the one we're talking about?
No, we're talking about the baseball field.
Oh, all right.
And they want to interfere with each other.
Okay.
They don't play at the same time. So it's the main ball field off the parking lot. Sony Hearing Board meeting for the Colebrook validity challenge. We're still working through negotiations with the developer on that. That was the topic of discussion during the executive session this evening. The Knoll Dorrit Park, the contract for that work has been signed. There is a meeting with the contractor next week to talk about project particulars and timeline. So I should have more information for you at the next meeting. The Community Map Project, thanks to Diane and the receptionist, is headed to the printer. That's a long time coming, it's been over, probably over a year, you've been working on that. That is a project that is not costing the taxpayers any money. It is funded by advertisers around the circle of the map that you'll get. And that will go to each of the, each property in the township. The Knoll Road Community Park, the GSL survey, the group that we're using to seek funding availability, that survey has been submitted. They are working behind the scenes and gathering their information and getting their ducks in a row so that when the grant funding opens, they are ready to present the case for the township. The Rec Authority, the Pro Shop Project, we continue to work with Cornerstone. Cornerstone is now working with DMA, our engineer, and they're looking at utility lines and where they come in. Currently, they come in from Stony Battery. They're not going to be relocated to Church Street, so there's a cost to that, so that's going to be factored in. And hopefully, by the May Rec Authority meeting, there should be a cost estimate so that we know how much we're looking at for that project. The Treasurer's Report, in case you didn't notice, but the Treasurer's Report does have another extra two lines. We have now pulled out the funding for the special, police special projects and also the stormwater special projects out of the cash balance. So now what you're looking at, when you look at the general fund cash balance, is money in the general fund that is not reserved and the other reserves are listed now in separate categories. Gives you a better picture of where we stand. Nothing really going on with stormwater projects. I did attend the LIMC meeting, in fact, it was held here. We did talk extensively about the county reassessment. The residents should be getting notification, a flyer from the county. Oh, came today, good. So the flyer is out, the assessments will start occurring. They should have them completed by next June. Then the residents have a 90-day time period to appeal. And then the new assessment value will take and go into effect January 1 of 2027. That's it, unless there's questions.
Any questions?
No.
Any questions from the audience on the manager's report, comments? Okay.
Yeah, and one comment, I just want to say how much I enjoyed the East Hemphill Township Newsletter. I just thought that it was an excellent job. I looked for misspellings, couldn't find anything, and it was very informative. And I thought the article about the Roystown Fire Department would really help the community understand the situation. So I just want to applaud that effort.
All right. Thank you, and with that, we are going to adjourn our meeting. It is 7:45, we will not be back. Thank you, everyone.